I'm Jay Delaney from the Law Office of Lindbergh Corporate, Department of Public Justice Cooper. And we're representing the applicant, D.B. Mark. I just want to make sure for the record, and I think your court knows that we submitted a letter noting that we believe that the notice is effective, and we believe, among other things, that the first amendment is effective. Letting know, the other objection I didn't put in the letter is that we're working on a high holy day, so it's not going to happen today. But I think we're all suffering together tonight on that. But again, on a serious note, I just want to make sure it's in the record, and the applicant probably knows, under the law, that the applicant proceeds at his peril. We're not being difficult. If we were really being difficult, we wouldn't have even brought it to the attention of anybody. We just want to make sure the record is clear.
We've never known you, Mr. Delaney, to be difficult. So, no. On that matter, yes, we'd like to acknowledge that the letter has been received, I should give it to the record, and Mr. Ball, the board attorney, would just quickly like to make mention of his review of the issue at this point.
Sure. And the other thing, and I don't know what the protocol is with the board, but many of the board will vote on it, I don't know what your protocol is on the further, what your protocol is.
Before Mr. Ball goes, can we just make sure to use the microphone so people can hear? That's in front of you?
Yes. Should be as much.
Test, test.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And I do just want to briefly note for the record, the board did receive your letter, they did March 15th, it was circulated to all the board members, I've had a chance to review it. It is my opinion, I did review the notice as well, it is my opinion that the notice is sufficient and that the applicant can proceed this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. And of course, the applicant knows that we didn't do it to be malicious, we just put it on the record. Who knows, there may be others out there. Certainly, if the applicant decides to re-notice and clarify, I think that would be appropriate, but they know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. As indicated, this is an application on behalf of S.T.N.V., Kevin Kieran Flanagan. I was hoping that my speaking, this is the record, is allowing it to be broadcast throughout the room. It's not?
No.
All right, sorry, Mr. Weber.
That's quite all right.
Thank you very much.
Does that work?
That's better, thank you.
Thank you. This is an application for development, calling for the improvement of the properties located at 557-565 Morris Avenue. By way of orientation, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Alfonso, if you could bring up the site plan. By way of orientation, what you're looking at is the perspective that's been prepared by Studio 1200, and that's Nancy Doherty and Unpeng Chen as the architects having prepared that perspective. With regard to the orientation, thank you, Ms. Alfonso, what we're looking at is an exhibit, and this should probably be marked, if I could, we have the perspective A1, I would have this as A2. And what this does is show the orientation of the proposed structure that is scheduled to be built in the N.B.N.B., standing for the Neighborhood Business Zone. Morris Avenue is at the bottom, River Road is to the left, across the street from this structure is the Bristol Meyer Swift renovation of S3. The last time I drove by, I saw that they were putting the cladding on, and that's the application that was recently approved by the planning board. To the left of this structure is the renovation of the Barnes Chevrolet building, with further down to the lower left-hand corner is the Sunrise renovated or assisted living building. So what we see in terms of the renovation of this neighborhood is the BMS S3 being revised, Barnes Chevrolet being renovated and revised, and then the Sunshine on the fourth corner also being revised. So this is, as we could see it, the fourth part of the development, if you will, of the intersection and this particular gateway to the city. Now I say that with regard to the board's overall view of how this fits in the city's own development plan and how it views this. But one of the points that the Flanagan's have made clear is to be sensitive to the neighbors. At the top of this page is Plain Street, that's the R6 residential zone, and it can't be seen here, but those approximately five single-family homes about the rear lot line of this property. Now, they have deep lots, but nonetheless, this is something that the Flanagan's have ensured to make, bring to the attention of their engineer and their architect. When you look at the main portion of the structure, you see that that's approximately 80 feet setback from the rear lot line. The L, if you will, to the left, which is designed to incorporate and provide a presence of this building, is approximately 35 feet, as far as I can tell, looking at this exhibit from where I stand. The proposal calls for a line of landscaping, and when I look at John Linsen's report, we see that he has opined that this will be sufficient and that this, given the southern exposure of the plants, will succeed in providing that screening. When you look at the top, and of course, this is all a proffer of the testimony that's going to be presented to the board through the Flanagan's, through their experts. So I'm just providing the board an overview of what is an application that their board professionals have spent over 30 pages in administrative comments. There's been a TRC with regard to this, and this has been an application that has undergone diligent review. And that includes, as I indicated previously, the diligent review of Mr. Delaney and Mr. Manoya, who have also brought up points that will add to the improvement of what's proposed.
And just for the record, as set forth in my letter to the board, we will be going well beyond what's in our letter and also what Mr. Weber has said, with hopefully, we won't have to, but we do have a planner and we do have other experts available.
With regard to the proposal, the application as it proceeds ahead through the various experts, and when you look at the driveway now that separates the proposed development, by the way, called Turkano Park, that references a neighborhood in Dublin, the driveway currently is going to be shifted toward River Road in order to allow for additional space between the driveways. And that's where, in terms of the presentation tonight, we're going to have the Flanagan's testify, and then we're going to have Nancy Doherty, the architect, testify. At the subsequent hearing, we'll be providing the civil engineering and the traffic engineering, and if time permits, the professional planner on behalf of the application. So tonight will be the Flanagan's, by way of introduction, to set the table, if you will, and then Nancy Doherty to address the architect that's presented here. In terms of the variances, the variance that is required for the use is because in the Neighborhood Business Zone, the requirement is that the first floor be a business. So that what is proposed here is to have that first floor as a residence. And one of the reasons for that is because you already have the businesses on the promenade, and that's the property that's owned by Mr. Manoya, as you're looking at this diagram to the right. So you don't want to end up in a situation where you're saturating the business areas. Because of that, you have the justification of itself, by providing this as a fully residential development, you provide less intensity, you provide less traffic, and you provide a quieter setting than if you had businesses across the board. As a result, that ties in as well with regard to the floor-area ratio. Again, the question will be for the board to consider whether or not the property can accommodate what is proposed here. And because of the elimination of the residential aspect, of the commercial aspect and the dedication to this property being wholly residential, it is submitted that the property will be, in fact, capable, more than capable, of being able to accommodate the issues that are affected by the increase in floor-area ratio.
Mr. Weber, just pause for a quick moment. We just want the record to show that Liz Newell, a board member, is joining this evening. Thank you. May proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the design as well, there is another aspect where in the N.B. zone, the Neighborhood Business Zone, they wanted the buildings to be no more than 10,000 square feet on the individual lots. Here, because we have a consolidated property, that aspect of the development is no longer necessary. That 10,000, could be argued, would design to avoid the big stores, to avoid a situation here where you have a developer coming and saying, "Well, I'm going to consolidate all this, but I am going to put a business all the way on the bottom, put residential on top," and all of a sudden, you now have a big box type of setting. That was not the purpose of the Neighborhood Business Zone. So in this regard, those variances all tend to flow from the fact that the aspect of having an additional commercial use next to the promenade, which already has those commercial uses, benefits and realizes that set of variances. With regard to the additional variances or variances with regard, Ms. Alfonso, if you could bring up the perspective again from River Road and Morris Avenue. If we could go to the next perspective, and this would be marked as A3. So when you look at the change in topography, the height from the lowest section to the highest point is required to be varied under the DRO. The overall building height complies with the ordinance, and the ordinance allows three stories, by the way, and that complies with that as well. But what you're looking at, because the topography slopes away, the lowest point to the highest point exceeds that permitted area, which you're allowed to have an additional five feet, but you have to measure from the lowest point to the top of the parapet, and we exceed that. Likewise, and Nancy Doherty will go through the appurtenances, but there is appurtenances as well with regard to that. By appurtenances, you have stair towers, you can have pergolas on top of a structure, but they're limited to 15 feet in height and no more than eight feet above that which is permitted. Now, there's law numbers coming through, and we will walk through those through our testimony. The additional variances, if we can go back to the site plan, the additional variances would be the buffer. And you would have seen in Krista Anderson's report, she says the buffers required for at least 10 feet, 20% of the lot depth, and what is being proposed here is 7.5 feet with the row of evergreen. It's also permitted to have a solid fence to augment that buffering. What is proposed here is the wrought iron fence, which, among the different reviews from your board professionals, they suggest that that's appropriate because it will allow the row of Arbor V-Tide to succeed and to thrive. Nonetheless, that is a variance associated with this. With regard to the fence that's toward the front on Morris Avenue, that's going to be withdrawn, we are going to comply with regard to that. Likewise, there is a question with regard to signage, there was originally designed, and again, because we're going to be revising the engineering plans, we're going to eliminate the variance with regard to the island. So there was a free-standing sign proposed in the island, because that's going to be eliminated, no variances requested with regard to that. There are some variances associated with the details of the lighting, Ms. Doherty will walk through that, so that is appropriately addressed. Now, I'm pausing for a second to see if there's anything else that I've overlooked. I don't recall any additional variances associated with this application, and certainly, there's no Wall Street parking. I think that, under your DRO, not even the RSIS, you're required to have 104, I believe they're at 138 or something along those lines, in terms of the amount of Wall Street parking that's being provided. That gives you an outline of what the variances are, gives you an outline of what is due to be presented tonight, recognizing that we're going to have the introduction, get to the architect, and then we would ask that this be carried to a subsequent hearing so that we can go over the engineering plans, the traffic engineering at that point. If there's any questions with regard to my proffer, I'd be happy to respond.
Perhaps, Mr. Delaney, is there anything you'd like to note before the board presents questions? We'll try to bounce back and forth.
I assume this is just not under oath, he's not a witness, he's just the attorney.
He's just a humble attorney, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
All right. I assume there are no questions from board professionals for the attorney? Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Okay. Any questions from members of the public? All right. Well done, Mr. Weber.
I would ask that Kieran Flanagan, and I don't know if Kevin Flanagan's going to join him at the dais. Now, one of the issues that we have is ordinarily, I would sit in my spot at the table, and I would use my daughter's opera voice to raise the questions. I'm afraid I might have to suspend the space up here with you while we share the microphones, if that's appropriate and acceptable to you.
Mr. Weber will just swear, and yet neither witness is present.
If each of you could just raise your hand.
... relationship to the applicant, S.T.N.V., LLC?
Yes, I'm a principal. And I'm a principal.
And are you authorized to speak on behalf of the applicant in connection with the application that's currently pending before the board?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am. Ms. Alfonso's giving me my own microphone so I can return to my usual spot.
I can show that was the chair's microphone, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the application that's currently pending before the board, you have processed that application on behalf of 557-565 Morris Avenue, and it brought that before the board?
We have.
And can you stare eye for the board, the purpose of the application, setting forth what brought you to the preparation of the application, the name of Turkano Park, and your role within the City of Summit?
Okay. Actually, let me just start by thanking everybody for coming out tonight. I do appreciate it. It is one of the high holy days for us Irishmen, so I know that, I'll make this as brief as I can in consideration of the fact that you might be holding a bar stool somewhere out there, waiting for your first cold beer of the evening. We just wanted to share tonight the vision that we have and let you know that we are part of the neighborhood, we're part of the town, we've been here for over 50 years as part of Summit, and we've really kind of undertaken this plan. This is a very important plan for us, with, you know, a high sensitivity to the neighbors on Plain Street, looking to enhance the businesses that are next door to it, and to overall have a negative or very light impact on the area. And that's really very, very important to us. We did not want to become, because we plan on staying here, we're not kind of a fly-by-night sort of group, we're entrenched and rooted in the town, we really wanted to make this something that was going to be very sensitive, and something that we could, you know, have as, something to look back at as a bit of a legacy and something to be proud of. To start off, I'll tell you a little bit about my family's history here. As I said, we've been here for 50 years, and we feel like the town of Summit has really taken good care of us. And in turn, the things that are good for Summit are good for us, and we've seen that borne out over and over and over again. Our dad, who many of you may know, is kind of legendary in town here, is from Ireland. On St. Patrick's Day, I can tell you that, both of our parents are, so it's appropriate. And we've worked alongside him for many, many years, basically our whole lives, with a few exceptions of little side tracks here and there. And we've helped him assemble these properties over a long period of time. At this point, he's handed that all over to us when we purchased that from him, and we've kind of continued in sharing the idea that he's always wanted to have, which is to add something of quality and beauty to the area and also provide something that's essential, which is housing. We all know that that is a seminal part of a town as it grows, is to have, you know, places for people to live in. So that's important to us. And that's one of the reasons why we've named it Turkano Park, which is the neighborhood. In Ireland, the neighborhood that you live in is more important than the town you live in. So my father grew up in Turkano Park, so if you lived in Dublin, you would know what Turkano Park was, you'd say, "Ah, you're from that neighborhood." And so it has a very deep organic meaning to us as a family, and that's why we decided to do that. And in our time, we've watched this part of town really develop and be refined, you know, in the years that we've been here. And, you know, what's been nice about Summit, and I can say with exception of a couple other towns around us, Summit's been really good at developing itself and growing, but holding on to its charm and comfortable feel. And that is something that we really admire a lot about this town. I think it's what makes Summit such an attractive town. So we want to, we don't want to continue with that, with a real distinct sensitivity to everything that matters in the town and in the area. In particular, we've watched this part of town really, you know, grow with investment and that kind of renewal of late in particular. I mean, the Sunrise community has gone up there, and I think that that's a really nice part of our town and our community. So we're kind of excited to be part of this and have our family be part of this as it's going forward. So just kind of keep that in mind as you deliberate.
In terms of bringing your vision to fruition, have you retained the services of Studio 1200 as your architect?
We have.
Have you retained the services of Dynamic as your civil engineering?
We have.
And as your traffic engineering?
Yes.
And have you retained the services of Paul Phillips as your professional planner?
We have.
And have you relied on them in the presentation and preparation of the application that's currently pending before the board, understanding that you had provided them instructions with regard to assuring sensitivity to the neighbors on Plain Street?
We have.
Have you also had an opportunity to conduct a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors on Plain Street, as well as all the neighbors within 200 feet and beyond?
We have.
And during that neighborhood meeting, were there certain points that were brought up? And I'm thinking of the issue that was brought up by the one woman who lived on New Brook Parkway that had a...
Mary Dickey.
Mary Dickey.
Yeah.
And she had raised questions about traffic, didn't she?
She did.
And have you instructed your traffic engineer to investigate those issues that she has raised?
Yes.
And at the subsequent hearing before this board, will that traffic engineer be providing testimony with regard to that?
Yes, it will.
Were there any additional points that were raised by the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting that you've incorporated, such as assuring that the landscaping would be appropriate and consistent with the necessity of providing an evergreen buffer?
Yes.
And I've indicated that there was a technical review committee meeting associated with this application, which was attended by you and by your experts, and did you, at the result of that TRC, also revise the plans in connection with that?
We have.
And have you had an opportunity, as I've indicated, for me to speak with Jay Delaney and for yourselves to speak with Nick Manoya, your neighbor, with regard to the access point and then the operation of your proposed structure?
We have.
And are you willing to continue that discussion with your neighbor through either Mr. Delaney through this office or directly with Mr. Manoya? Have you had an opportunity to review the over 30 pages of reports from the board's staff, which have an address of 557-565 Morris Avenue for the application ZD-21-2090 major site plan?
Yes, we have.
And do you agree to be bound by those recommendations within the staff reports, subject to such comments and qualifications as your experts may provide during their testimony?
Yes.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney, any questions you'd care to offer for the applicants?
In light of the presentation and the way things are going, we've had a dialogue, a continuing dialogue as represented by Mr. Weber, I would like to reserve my right to cross-examine these witnesses at a later time, and I assume they'll be available. Mr. Weber?
I have no objection to that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Any questions from our board professionals for the applicants? It's nice to see you, Mr. Snack, because, by the way, it's been a while. All right. Any questions from members of the board for the applicants? Okay. Then we'll open to any member of the interested public that would care to ask a question of the applicants, understanding that there's traffic engineers and architects and qualified professionals. Is that anyone like this? Yep. Come up and grab the mic. And then just, we'll recall, this is just for questions, there'll be an opportunity for comment, not picking on you specifically, but...
I know, I like to talk. Sorry. Hi. Dory Gagnon, G-O-G-N-O-N, 27 Bedford Grove. Thank you for coming out. So I appreciate that you guys have been in town a long time. I have too, I've been here my whole life. So I have some questions for you. Do you know how many people are currently residing in the homes that you plan on tearing down?
I would say about 25.
25?
I can't quite hear you. So that's being...
It's about 25.
And do you know how many children reside there?
Not many.
Not many.
Do you think we can get a clear number on that? Because I know for a fact that there are children in there. And so my concern is for the children that are attending schools, and how much notice have they been given to find a new place of residence?
They haven't been given any notice yet.
And so how long would this project take, are you estimating?
If you're referring to notice of them?
Just give you notice, but how long would this project take, if you were...
From the time that it starts?
Mm-hmm.
Approximately six to eight months, hopefully?
So they would have six, a year to find a new place?
Yeah.
So I work with a lot of the underserved people in town, and I think a lot of the people that might reside in your residence now might qualify...
I just ask that we kind of tailor our end of commentary or context and ask direct questions.
Sure. Okay. So my question, let me look at my list, hold on a second, I got... So my other questions for you would be, would you be able to give them a more reasonable time or help them find homes within the City of Summit so they don't have to look elsewhere outside the City of Summit and have to maybe redistrict themselves if there are already children located at Washington School?
If I can respond to that, as part of the application that's being presented, and that is a good point, Ms. Gagnon, the application also includes, if I'm not mistaken, affordable housing of eight units of different sizes, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom. And the city has an affordable housing mechanism in place, and once they could apply to that, then they would be considered eligible for the affordable housing.
Okay, so I'm aware of that affordable housing, as we're going through this with the Broad Street West development, and sometimes I don't know how this new plan's going to go, but some of those affordable housings are not affordable for the lower income and the underserved population here in town. So that was my concern, and I'm just speaking for the people that I work with.
We're moving beyond the point of questions.
I'm sorry, I'm going to start again. Let me see my other ones. Do you plan, have you acquired other pieces of land further up from Morris Avenue that you plan on building on? Morris Avenue, are there any other pieces of land that you...
I have other properties.
And are you planning on building on anything else besides this property?
Not right now.
In the future, at all? Because I'm a long-term person, so if this is the only project, but there's other pieces of land up on Morris Avenue that we're all concerned about.
Maybe, Mr. Weber, if you'd just like to clarify the scope of the application and how that question may or not apply.
What we're talking about at this point, Ms. Gagnon, is that you have an application that's affecting only 557-565 Morris Avenue, the properties that are subject here of the application. Any additional properties that may be on the...
Mr. Weber, can you move the mic, just hold up?
Any additional, thank you, Mr. Weber, any additional properties that may be subject to future development or future ownership or beyond the scope of this board's jurisdiction.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the interested public care to ask a question of the applicants? Okay? Yep, one question from Mr. Ball.
Now, Mr. Flanagan, you mentioned instructions would take six to eight months, it seems unusually short. I work partially with instructional, I would love to see that as a lawyer.
I corrected it, it's a year. But I'm the builder.
He's the builder, I'm not.
Yeah.
And with Ms. Gagnon's question about other properties you... I agree it's outside the scope, however, it would be helpful to understand, if you consider the intensity of use here, you know, what other properties you own, if you consider the totality of the circumstances in the city.
Well, we own 326 Morris Avenue. Well, we own 326 Morris Avenue, 11 George Street, 1 George Street, 5 George Street, and 527 Morris Ave. And that's at 326, right?
Beyond the properties that you own, it may just be a continued point of interest in the application to remind the board, members of the interested public, about the composition of the neighborhood and the current conditions, BMS, properties that you, unless you do own the BMS property.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Not yet. So just, I think it's an important point of clarity, right, moving forward? We appreciate the, to the extent that is appropriate with this application or consideration to understand current conditions, traffic, parking, et cetera. Appreciate your sensitivity to that. Thank you. No further questions from the interested public. Mr. Weber, if you'd like to proceed with your next witness. Oh, sorry, Mr. Naidoo.
Hello. David Naidoo, 100 West End Avenue. Actually, because I don't know where in the process I would ask this question, so I'm gonna ask it now. So I apologize if it should be asked somewhere else. So one of the variances that are being sought is away from the neighborhood business district and to have it all residential. But I guess from my background, wouldn't that be within the planning board's jurisdiction? Like, what am I missing as far as? Aren't we, the planning board made a neighborhood business district, how does this become a variance to the zoning board to change that?
Mr. Weber's gonna be...
Nice seeing you, Mr. Naidoo. Nice to see you on this side of the dais. The result is because of the D1 variance, a use variance associated to all the jurisdictions in the zoning board of adjustment. So the board has the primary jurisdiction and as a result also can exercise site plan jurisdiction.
So this is... So even though this effectively gets rid of a neighborhood business district for one particular site, it can be done through the zoning board and does not need to go to the planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's it, and you have paraphrased that, which is presented to the board for their decision.
And, Mr. Naidoo, from time to time, there are openings on the zoning board. We would always appreciate folks with a certain depth of experience to join us here. If you need to scratch that itch.
Thank you. It's one that I haven't done yet, so...
Thank you.
All right. And here are no further questions from members of the interested public. Mr. Weber, if you'd like to proceed with your next witness?
I would call Nancy Doherty to be stand to be sworn in to give testimony in this matter.
And if you could please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name?
Sure, Nancy, last name is Doherty, D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect. I've been practicing architecture since 1990. I am principal and owner, part-owner of Studio 1200, an architecture and design firm in Short Hills. I have appeared before numerous boards in New Jersey, including Summit, Milburn, Madison, Maplewood, Morristown.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Or would you like to accept your credentials at this point? I think we'll accept your credentials, may proceed.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Delaney, please.
And if it's more appropriate for cross, that's fine. I just wanted for the record. And please, Mr. Weber, if you want to interject as well. Ms. Doherty, you don't have an interest or you're not a shareholder or a partner in the applicant? You shaking your head no?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Proceed, Mr. Weber.
Ms. Doherty, are you familiar with the application that's currently pending before the board?
Yes.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
We were retained as the architect.
And have you in fact prepared the architectural plans that are presented to the board tonight?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the city of Summit?
Yes.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
It's a long story, but I went to school in Summit many, many years ago. So I grew up in Madison. I graduated from Kent Place. I've lived in Maplewood for 31 years, and my business has been in Short Hills for the last 20 years.
And are you familiar with the development regulations, ordinance of the city of Summit?
Yes, I am.
Would you be so kind as to describe what you propose in connection with the development of this property from an architectural standpoint?
Sure. Here we go. So as you've heard, as the team collaborated with the Flanagan's to bring their vision to life, the top priority for the team, as was shared with us by Heron and Kevin, was to create a project that was sensitive to the scale of the neighborhood. Starting with this guiding principle, we worked carefully to meet the guidelines of the neighborhood business zone and to also celebrate the site's location as the western gateway into Summit. Turkano Park will be a luxury property with a hospitality vibe. There will be 24/7 valet service, a complement of amenities, and upscale finishes throughout the property. The promenade site just to the east on Morris Avenue, as you've heard and you know very well, has brought a nice mix of retail to the community. The Flanagan's didn't want to overwhelm the neighborhood with more retail, which would mean more traffic. So we created a plan with amenities and apartments on the first floor, almost all parking underground, and two floors of apartments above that. Aesthetically, the project, as you've heard, was inspired by the Flanagan's ancestral roots in Turkano Park, Ireland, and will feature timeless and durable exterior materials. These include a rusticated, and as you can see in the rendering up there, I hope you can see, these include a rusticated stone base with cast stone water table, vertical brick bays above with bronze box window bays, alternating with a rich facade clad in limestone panels. As you move to the rear of the building, the materials will transition to traditional hard-coated stucco in between the brick bays, with balconies accenting some of the units. There will be decorative lighting subtly washing the building face on Morris Avenue and River Road, using stances that provide up-and-down light without any lights spillage past the property line.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. And I understand, just for the board's edification, that what is going to happen is that, Ms. Doherty, you're going to go through elevations as well.
Sure.
So this is an overview of the materials that have been requested to be outlined by the professionals and that we're just referring to the perspective. You will walk through all of the elevations, won't you?
Sure.
And then the floor plans.
Yes.
So just to advise the board, we're not stuck on this one exhibit, but there will be additional exhibits.
And I'll speed up here, but I just sort of want to lay the groundwork. Yeah. So the team paid close attention to the design requirements and the ordinance, and we believe that we've met the spirit of the requirements through our use of materials, the facade rhythm as we go across the building, and the use of design features. The building purposely relates to the size and proportion of the surrounding structures and is in fact lower than the promenade building next door. The building, as I said, will be three stories over a fully enclosed underground garage. It will have eight COA units, as was mentioned. It will be fully meeting the affordable component for the site. On the first floor, there will be a lounge, a gym, and an outdoor patio, all of which I'll go through when we get to the plans. And then more amenities on the rooftop. The amenities will be available to all of the tenants at no charge, including all of the affordable units. The underground parking will be efficient and hidden from view and will have state-of-the-art EV charging stations with wiring for additional stations in the future. The garage will have a comprehensive fire protection system and will be managed and accessed by the 24/7 valet staff. If we can go, great. So this is the perspective at the corner of Morris and River Road. And as was mentioned, we understood the importance of this gateway corner of the property leading into the center of Summit. The project will complement the other redevelopment in the area, as was mentioned by Mr. Weber. As you can see from the rendering and as was mentioned in the engineer's report, there's a 16-foot differential between the lowest portion of the site and the highest portion. On the facade, as you go from the corner of River Road along Morris Avenue, there's a 12-foot change in grade at the building itself. So that has led to the need for the first variance, which is for height. And as Mr. Weber described, height is measured two different ways in Summit. So one is the average grade. We meet the height requirement for average grade, which is 42 feet. What we need a variance for is for the elevation, the maximum building height from the lowest point. And for that, 47 feet is permitted, and we are at 51 feet. And it is because of that sort of substantial change in slope on the property. One other variance is required relative to the roof, and that has to do with, there is a requirement that you have a pitched roof, four over 12. And this is definitely, has a flat roof with a parquet on it. That is a design requirement, so we've satisfied that. As was described, we're using a mixture of materials. There are brick at the corner of the building, and at each of the corners, we have brick piers. They have decorative stances. When we get to the elevations, I can answer any questions about the height of the lighting. There's ample landscaping that will be described by the civil engineer. There are street trees that will punctuate that facade along Morris Avenue and extensive perimeter plantings. We will get to the signage when we get to the elevations. As was mentioned, the freestanding sign, which was noted to require a variance, will be eliminated when the site plan is adjusted. I think that is it. Let's go, I think we should go to the elevations now, starting on Morris Avenue. So this is the elevation, starting Morris, River Road is on the left, and you're going up Morris Avenue. Do you want to submit this exhibit?
We just have this marked as an exhibit. I think we're at A4.
Can you just do the entire elevation as A4?
Yeah, will you be submitting this as well so we can post it on the website for members of the public to view?
I think we will submit it, yes. We can submit this entire package as a workable.
All right, yeah, I just want to put it on the website.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Ms. Doherty, you heard that the elevations that are being referred to as A4 now include all of the elevation and that it was represented that these will be posted to the city's website?
Yes. Okay. So on this first elevation on Morris Avenue, again, it's not going to be legible up on the screen here. But there were questions about the, there are stances that punctuate the brick portions of the building. And those stances, there's a requirement of a maximum height of eight feet above grade. Those stances go from an elevation of eight feet to 16 feet above grade, and it just, again, has to do with that 12-foot difference in elevation on the site.
Was also my understanding that some of the stances are at 24 feet? Or is that my misunderstanding?
On different elevations, there are different heights.
And Ms. Alfonso, would it be possible to enlarge that which is being projected on the screen?
It can't be enlarged very much more than this. But if you look at the red circles circling each scotch, scotch, finding here.
Okay. So those stances are at 13 feet over on that side of the building. The stances actually down on the left, Ms. Alfonso, down all the way on the left-hand side of the building are actually at a lower elevation because they're... They're down lower.
Mr. Chairman, I have asked Ms. Peng, the architect of Studio 1200, to assist in the identification of those portions of the development that is being testified to by Ms. Doherty. That's acceptable?
It's acceptable. I'll let you bring her a check.
That's okay, thank you. This is Samantha, and Peng, who's just in previous, I just circled in red. One, two, three, four, five, six scotch lights, is that right? And two on the left side of the exhibit, A4.
Pause a second, I'm gonna swear you in, Ms. Peng, just to ensure any comments that may come out.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give, Samantha? Is it the whole, the whole of the truth?
I do.
Do you state your name, spell your last name?
My name is Unpeng Chan. Last name is C-H-A-N.
And Peng, we were talking about these scotch lights.
Ms. Alfonso, would you just qualify, please?
Peng, can you please start your qualifications and your license?
I am an architect. I've been licensed since 1998. I have been practicing architecture since 1995. So I've been working on the New York and recently New Jersey in a few years, and...
So are you testified before any boards before?
Yes, I have. That would be in Westfield recently.
Licensed in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
New Jersey and California.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the scotch lights, thank you. Now that you're sworn in, Peng, can you please describe the six scotch lights that we just discussed?
With Nancy...
They've been circled in red, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
They are the right location.
Thank you. Is there another question on the scotch lights?
I have written in my notes from reading the application that there are lights at 24 feet. I didn't see them on the...
They don't.
But they're written in the verbiage of the application. Is it possible that that was just wrong?
Materials make mistakes all the time. I'm sure that Nancy can confirm that.
The question's been directed to Ms. Doherty. Thank you, Ms. Doherty. And she will respond to that in due course.
Right. So the maximum height of the stances, the D stances on the, is 16 feet above grade. So that's the way we're measuring stances. There are some lights on the balconies, and so those are higher. When I get to those, I'll give you those numbers so that you have them.
This is in the description of the variances.
Right. So some of the lights got shifted down, and so that's why we're down at 16 feet.
So I'm gonna get rid of 24, this is...
Correct. For the D lights, type D.
Thank you.
Okay. So sort of just to finish up on this elevation, so the D lights go from a height of eight feet to a height of 16 feet. So there is a variance required for those D lights. In addition to that, all the way on the left-hand side of this elevation where the bike storage is down closer to River Road, there are some recessed lights in the ceiling. Those lights are at 10 feet, as are canopy lights underneath the outdoor raised patio. And those lights are at 10 feet above the ground. They're recessed in the roof. And so those lights also need a variance because they're higher than the eight feet that's permitted.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. With regard to the lights, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've just conferred with the civil engineer, and during his testimony, a full lighting exhibit will be presented, so that all of this detailed information can be presented to the board members, which will include the site lighting, and then the lighting on the structure, so that there'll be the opportunity to see that in one or maybe two sheets of exhibits.
Okay. So I think that you can see here in the elevation, so we'll move on from the lighting. In this elevation, you can see that there is a rhythm of the brick, and then in between the bays of brick, it is limestone panels that will be this facade, so those materials will carry around onto the entry portion of the building. You can see also in this elevation, on the left-hand side at the top, there is a pergola structure, and then there are two other appurtenances that you're seeing up on the roof. One is a stair tower, and the other one is for the stair and the elevator. So those are the highlights on Morris Avenue. So if we can go to the next elevation, and if we can try and blow this up a bit. So this is the elevation at the entry, so you've come in the driveway. You see on the left-hand side, there's a raised terrace that has then a canopy on that terrace. As you move to the center of this elevation, that is the overhang, there is a drive port. You'll be able to pull in underneath that, into that drive port, underneath the overhang there, where the entrance doors are. There is an accessible loading zone there, so we are providing the accessible access into the building with that. And this also shows on the left and the right of this elevation is brick, and then in the center, you have limestone panels that will be above the entrance to the building. In the distance, you see that the sort of L of the building, which is closer to River Road. And as was mentioned, this main portion of the building is 80-plus feet off the rear property line, and the portion of the building that's in the distance is approximately 32 feet from the property line. Again, I think we'll wait for the civil engineer's exhibit to show you all of the lighting. I can just say that the stances on this entry elevation are at 13 feet, which will be shown in the civil drawing, so they're above the eight-foot maximum because they're lined up with where the canopy is. And again, there are recessed lights in this canopy, so they're at 10 feet in the ceiling of that canopy. If we continue around to the, yes?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. What is the white structure at the top?
Sure. So that is the, where the elevator and the stairs are, and also where the vent stack is for all the mechanicals. There was a question about the mechanicals. There is no mechanical equipment on the roof. It is all in the garage, so there's no screening for mechanical equipment required. The only thing that is up there is venting, and it will be enclosed within these appurtenances for the stairs and the elevator.
And this elevation also shows the entrance to the underground garage on the right-hand side, doesn't it?
It does. It looks a little sloppier than it really is because of the screen, but there we go. All the way on the right, you're seeing that is the entrance, the slope, the ramp that will take you down to the garage.
And in terms of the vision of that driveway from properties on Plain Street, does it show that it's going to be recessed and set below retaining walls? Is that my understanding?
That is correct. So on either side of the ramp that goes down into the parking structure, there are retaining walls, and then you can see to the right of the retaining walls, the heavy dash line on the right-hand side represents the property line. That is the landscaping, and intentionally shown at its sort of elevation when it goes in.
I apologize for interrupting.
No problem. Okay. We can now go around to the elevation that would be the rear elevation, maybe again if we can load up a bit. So this is the elevation, if you were looking from Plain Street. So a couple of things to point out, there is a continuous fence which the civil engineer will speak to. On the other side of the fence, there is a continuous row of arborite, as was mentioned. Again, you see most of the building is sort of laid out, and that's because that building is, the majority of the building is that 80-plus feet off the property line. The portion on the right-hand side is the area of the building that's closest to River Road, and as you can see, that portion of the elevation is all brick, and has the bay windows that are similar to what you see on the River Road and the Morris Avenue, and also the entry elevation.
Ms. Doherty, sorry, just to ask a quick question.
Sure.
I appreciate that this is from the perspective of Plain Street. To get a sense of massing, and you may want to address this in a separate portion of your testimony, how, what kind of distance could we argue that this is from the perspective of scale? Could we envision this structure in a position perspective here? And that may not be the intention of this visual, but to address the question of massing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was an issue that had been considered by the applicants and by the staff, but gaining entrance to the neighbor's property in Plain Street really interrupted that whole process. In terms of the response, the area that is shown in white is 82 feet from the rear lot line, and the area that is highlighted, showing the emphasis on the brick, that's at the 32 feet, if that provides the information. I'm also going to ask Ms. Doherty, in referring to the stair towers and the pergola, to indicate whether or not there are any variances associated with those structures, since there is a limitation associated with where and to what extent you can put stair towers and pergolas on the roof surface.
Sure. Okay, I, we will, let me just answer the appurtenances question right now, then. So the stair bulkhead, which is, if you can zoom in a bit on the, great, okay. So the one you see there on the left-hand side, that is the stair and elevator bulkhead, so from the finished portion of the roof to the top of that bulkhead is 15 feet. As was mentioned by Mr. Weber, the ordinance says that you can be 15 feet above the roof or eight feet above the maximum height. So in this instance, since our roof is at the maximum height of 42 feet, we need a variance for this appurtenance because we're at 15 feet. If you can zoop, yes.
And when you say you need a variance for this appurtenance, you're talking about the top seven feet of that appurtenance?
That's correct, thank you. If we go over to the second appurtenance now, which is the one, which is just the stair bulkhead, so this is the exit stair, and that one is nine foot six above the roof, and so that, we are one foot six above the permitted height. And then just to the right of that, you see the pergola. The pergola is 11 feet above the roof, and so that requires a variance for the top three feet of that, because eight feet is permitted.
Now, when I look at the coloration of those appurtenances, the stair towers, you're showing them in white, is that actually going to be the color that they're going to be at the time of instruction?
They're actually, they will be in a stucco finish, so they're not actually white, but they are a light finish to match the stucco finish on the, on this side of the building.
And will that stucco finish, when you say it's going to match which portion of the rear of the portion, or what part?
Correct.
The limestone, or what?
No, so on the, on the rear portion of the building, or the building facing Plain Street, it has stucco in between the brick that's on either side, and so the appurtenances will have that same material.
And what's the coloration for that stucco that's proposed? Is it going to be bright white? Is it going to be?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a neutral color that will complement the limestone. So... The last point on the roof is, there is a six-foot-high wood fence that goes around the southern portion of one area of the roof, so that does not require any sort of variance.
And that six-foot fence is to designate the area for the solar panels?
That is correct. There also is a four-foot fence that is for the dog run area, and again, that does not require a variance. Okay. I think unless there's questions about the elevations, I'll go to the plans. Oh, my apologies. Okay, so the River Road elevation, oop, go back. Okay, if you can zoom in a bit for that as well. So this is the view that you get from River Road. On the left-hand side, it has brick. On the bottom, you can see there's cast stone. We've shown the landscaping that will be on the property line, so it's a little bit hard to see, but there is, there's some beautiful arches that have been designed to go into this base of the building that is on the right-hand side of this elevation. And again, this elevation will have brick on the left and the right, and then the middle portion is limestone panels. In this one, you can see the pergola above, which is again on the corner of Morris and River Road.
Ms. Doherty, Ms. Doherty, you had indicated that there's a perspective showing the arch panels as a possible, but for a moment, to go back to the perspective and see if that can highlight those aspects of the design for the board. And so when you're looking at this perspective, you refer to an arch opening. What's the arch opening to? What's that about?
Sure. So on the corner, the corner of River Road and Morris Avenue, there are arched openings. They lead to, there's bike storage, so we have a pretty significant bike room in there, and so there's a nice entrance into that space, delineated on the corner of the building.
And does, and does this perspective highlight or show in greater setting the stucco or the stucco color that you referred to, or the limestone? I'm recognizing that the perspective's not coming up as well on the screen as in your presentation materials, but nonetheless, is there something here that shows what the stair towers would look like, or is that's another perspective?
So in this perspective, you're seeing the brick and the limestone. The stucco is intended to be close in, at least tone, to the cornice, which is above the brick and above the limestone. So you are seeing the color, the intended color of the stucco in this, in this perspective.
Can you ask Ms. Chen if she would just show that? Is that possible, to circle what we're talking about here? Or Ms. Alfonso?
Mr. Weber's thankful to have you tonight, Sam. We've seen him, but we've not seen him in some of the electronic presentations. Gratitude coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Alfonso, thank you, Ms. Peng.
Okay.
In fact, as you can see, we took every angle. You can't really see the stair bulkhead. It's like in the middle of the building from this angle.
Okay. I think we can go to the plans, to the next sheet. Keep going, to the plans. The next, one more. There we go. Okay. So just as we start to look at the first floor plan, a few technical aspects. The building will be fully sprinklered. It will, there was a question from the construction official about fire ratings, so based on the distance from the property lines, there's not a requirement for fire-rated separations for the building, so any, of course, any construction requirements will be met. The building is fully accessible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did forget the basement floor plan of the garage, which just requires a little testimony. And then I've had an opportunity to speak with the board professionals, and rather than having me walk through the 30-plus pages, I've asked them whether or not they could raise those questions that were not addressed in direct testimony, so that we complete their review, recognizing that the applicants are going to come back for a subsequent hearing. But at this point, I think that would move the presentation along, rather than listening to me ask question, page four, number 14.
Thank you, and just a quick question. Will the architect return to future, for future meetings?
Yes.
We need to recall that here. Thank you.
Okay. So I wanted to go through the basement plan, so this is, as you can see, on the top of this sheet, that shows the ramp that goes down into the lowest level of the garage. As I stated before, it is a valet, 24/7 valet garage. There will be stacked parking. It's fully enclosed. There'll be stacked parking for most of the garage. It will be triple stacked parking. There's a small area right close to the ramp that will be double stacked parking. Starting on the top left-hand side of this plan, in the top, we see there's a mechanical space there. Below that, and a sort of service room for the valet operation. Below that, you see running sort of top to the bottom on the plan, there's a total of 14 storage units at the bottom, and the bottom left-hand corner is an exit stair, and that stair actually takes you up to the bike room, which I'll show you in a moment. And then in the central area of the garage, there's another, where the elevators and stairs come into the garage. If we go up to, there will be just a couple of other points. There are eight EV charging stations in the garage, and there will be additional areas that have, are made ready, pre-wired, so that there are make-ready spaces that meets the current state requirement. We can go up to the mezzanine level, please. Oops, okay. So on this mezzanine level, so you know, most of the garage is just a tall space that has the stacked parking, but if we start in the top left-hand corner, there is additional mechanical space there. The generator is located there, so you see something that's starting on the top left, and then makes sort of a backwards L. That is the venting for the generator, so that pipe comes across at the top of the garage, and then goes up to the roof, and lands near where the dog run is on the roof. To the left-hand side there, there are additional meters, so again, all of the metering and everything is inside. There's direct access on the River Road side of the site to get into these metering and mechanical spaces. The long portion that runs up and down on the left-hand side of this plan is the bike room, and we have provision for storage for 34 bikes, so there's plenty of storage in there, and that is just for bikes, you know, sort of sitting on the ground in that storage space. As was described before, the little sort of triangle that you see in the bottom left of the plan is, takes you out to where those arches are, and then you can come straight out to sidewalk there from the bike storage.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. One of the benefits, if I can summarize, is that you don't have any HVAC on the roof, you don't have any chillers.
We do not.
And so you've taken all that equipment that ordinarily you could find on the top of roofs and structures, and you put it in this lower basement. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. And if you look at this plan here, below where the elevator and the stairs are, we've created an equipment mezzanine, so all of the condensers for all of the equipment for the building will be stored, I mean, will be located on that mezzanine. And then there's some louvers that just bring in fresh air from the Morris Avenue side of the building, which were represented on the elevation.
Well, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about these lifts, about the stacked parking, because I'm not, not familiar with it, and I'm wondering if you've ever incorporated it in any of your plans, if these developers have ever incorporated it in any of their projects, if it is mandatory that it always be operated by valet parkers, if there is a plan to, you know, make a long-term commitment to always having 24/7 valet, 364, five days a year, forever, and what happens if somebody doesn't come to work? I mean, can the residents operate these lifts? What happens if...
Thank you, Ms. Sager. That is a very astute question, and is... That is a very astute question, and is one that we're proposing to be addressed in full when we have the civil engineer and the traffic engineer. So, but very astute, we're just not ready for the architect's testimony to address that. But thank you. And Mr. Chairman, one of the points, too, that I would ask is, this has been an introductory portion, so we've put on the applicants, we have the architect going through, but just as Ms. Sager has raised her particular questions that she's looking to have answered, to the extent that it's possible, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that those board members that have questions that we have not raised yet or otherwise deferred, that we could hear them, so that we could present them and have a full presentation.
Mr. Weber, perhaps, though, if the applicants themselves could address the question about the commitment to maintain this valet service, because there are ADA and accessibility dependencies on maintaining that service. Where they do sell at some point to a subsequent owner, would they be bound by the commitment? How are we to ensure the continued compliance of this project in perpetuity?
Very good, Mr. Malin. Again, if we will have that answer, and we will have that definitively answered to your question, we would ask that that be considered. You can wait till the May 16 hearing, so then when we talk about how the operation works, and then you can hear in particular their representations and their commitment at that point. But I was kind of hoping to put it all together.
I look forward to May 16.
Thank you.
So that ends my description of the plan, so...
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. At this point, Mr. Chairman, rather than having me walk through the respective comments of the board planner and the board engineer, perhaps I could impose on them to raise any questions that were not attended to in direct testimony, but otherwise require attention in their reports.
Thank you. I just had, you talked about the HVAC and the generator exhaust, and...
Sorry, just for the record, this is Mr. Tower, the board's engineer.
Thank you. So the, is that shown on the elevation, the exhaust?
It is.
It is, okay.
Yep.
All the exhausts will be facing towards Morris Avenue. Will that be a fan exhaust? Or will it just be some type of a natural...
So there are intake louvers on Morris Avenue for the, we're talking about for the HVAC right now?
HVAC, and also I assume the generator, you know, it's exhausting to the roof by the dog park.
It is. There is an intake, which is shown on the elevation on the River Road side. So down at the bottom, in that masonry, in the lower-level masonry, there's an intake for the generator on the River Road elevation.
Okay, so there is no, there's no exhaust noise whatsoever is going to be directed towards the residential properties on the plane street?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right.
And I think it's said in the plans that all, everything will meet the ordinance as far as noise.
That is correct.
Obviously setbacks.
Right.
The, one of the comments we had was about locating the dog park farther away from the plane, the residential properties, towards the front, possibly. Is there, I'd just like to see what your rationale was for locating it where you have it.
The rationale, as I said, we sort of started with the elements, making the best use of the roof and wanting to allocate a space for the solar panels on the southern end of the rooftop. And I think the team felt that the, we're 30, I think we're 32 feet from the property line, even at the closest portion. And then, as was mentioned, we're another 10 feet back from that to the edge of the actual dog park area. So we're about 42 feet away, and that seemed like the most logical place to put the dog.
But there's no barrier from a noise standpoint, other than the parapet wall?
Correct.
Okay. And, but that, and you did testify that that rooftop area, the amenities are only available from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
So anybody that needs to walk their dog, other than, they're not, they will have no access to it?
Yeah, that's correct.
You mentioned about 14 storage units, but there's 52 apartments. These are for rent apartments?
Yes.
So there's only 14 storage units. Is there any other consideration made for the units as far as storage availability?
I mean, the team had talked about that that seemed like a satisfactory number of units. I will say that there is the ability, as you can see, some of those units are larger, so there is the ability to sort of make some of those units smaller and subdivide them. But that's the amount of space we have down there at the moment. The other thing I will say is the mechanical space has been sort of allocated. We may not need all of that space, and I would say then it would become storage space.
Okay, and there's no, you mentioned, hopefully repeating what you had said, is that the HVAC for like, so when I turn on the air conditioning unit on my, in my apartment?
Yes.
The unit is actually downstairs. There's nothing in the walls.
There's nothing in the walls. There's a closet, right? So there's a closet in each unit that has the air handler, and then the compressor is down.
Okay, so there's not going to be any noise factor when everybody has these running, the people on, anybody in the perimeter is going to hear anything?
No, not at all.
You mentioned about balconies. So I thought in one of the elevations, I know there were some Juliet balconies. Facing River Road, it looked like there were balconies.
There are no balconies facing River Road.
So the only ones are facing plane street?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they're at that 82, or nominally 80 feet from the property line.
If I can interrupt a second, Mr. Dewar. What's a Juliet balcony?
So a Juliet balcony is basically a railing that goes in front of windows that is not, you can't step out onto any balcony space.
Do the doors to the Juliet balcony open up? And if they do, they open up interior?
They're, if they're doors, they're sliding doors.
Okay, and you mentioned about having lighting on planters.
Yes.
Is there any proposal to have uplighting into any trees or plants on the roof?
There is not.
Okay. So there's no, the only uplighting possibly is that on the sconces?
The two that are at the top of the stairs, we have to have emergency...
Right, right.
Right, so there'll be those. And there is no, there is no uplighting proposed on the terrace.
Okay, and as far as uplighting on the side walls for the washing, I think we called it, is that, is that going to be uplighting or is it all going to be...
It's all downlighting, so it's all sort of shielded, sort of step lighting, if you will.
Okay. And the height of the garage, because I know there was some questions about how, if you're going to have three levels of cars, how tall is that garage going to be? Obviously, it's high enough to have a mezzanine, where you're going to have some bicycle storage.
Correct. I wanted to give this dimension accurately. So the total height of the garage, it's about 23 feet. So from the floor of the garage to the finished first floor is approximately, excuse me, approximately 23 feet.
Okay, and that's one of the, the garage system's going to be something where the attendant will go in, they'll plug in a number, and pick out the, whatever the car is, slot number five, and the other car, and just bring them out as meetings.
That's correct.
One of the things I think could be a potential concern would be cars coming out of the garage, obviously with an attendant, with the lights shining towards the, they were in the property. So I think there should be some testimony, something prepared that can address that, and that would be the engineer.
That would be from the engineer.
You said the roof is fully accessible. I think at this moment, I don't have any further questions for the architect.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Ed Snikus at Burgess Associates, professional planner for the board. A few questions for you with regard to your testimony. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe I heard you say that you had 36 one-bedrooms? Or was it 35 one-bedrooms?
Let me, I'm just going to get to my notes, so I don't think you missed information. I think it's a total of 36.
If you could just go through the various numbers again, because my total came up with 60, based upon what I thought I heard.
Oh.
But I wanted to double-check that off.
If it'll also help you, too, I had 36, 22, and 2. And when you do the math, that's 60 units. Mr. Snikus, you and I agree.
Uh-oh, well, I did something clearly wrong then, so let me just go to the cover sheet here. I'll do it the right way for you. So we have a total of 35 one-bedroom units, 16 two-bedroom units, and one, sorry, 15, sorry, two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. So that should give us 52.
That's correct.
My apologies.
I want to clarify that.
Yep, thank you.
Regarding the design details on the building, we had identified in our memorandum the need to review the design guidelines that are established for multifamily buildings. I believe you went through the fenestration on the various different detailings on the fronts and sides of the building. And then you talked about the rear elevation being in the stucco form. One of the things we may need to look at is how you're varying that stucco as well, because there is a need, and some of the design standards talk about differentiation and breakup so many, over so many feet. So if that's something you can take a look at for the next meeting and confirm that you'll comply with the design standards.
Sure.
That's something I just need to make sure it's being done.
Okay.
The affordable units that are proposed, are they all on one floor right now?
They're on two floors. So seven of them are on the first floor, and one of them's on the second floor.
Seven and one, okay. One of the things we may need to look at for the board's information is whether or not that still conforms with the COA regulations, or the applicable affordable housing regulations as to distribution of units within a building. I'm not certain if it controls it where it is on the floor, but that's something I'll look at and advise the board later with regard to that. You talked about the restrictions on the rooftop area of the building, and how would that be supervised? Is that thought about yet as far as, okay, if they're having a get-together up there at 10 o'clock, how does that then end at 10 o'clock and it's controlled from that standpoint? Do you know at this point, is that going to be the supervisor of the building, or what have you, or done by a key card? That may be something you think about and talk to the board in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Snikus. I think that would be appropriate also with regard to the board members' questions as to the maintenance of the three-tier. So there's going to be operational questions that I've heard from the board members, and we're going to be prepared to have the detailed affirmative dispositive answers to those questions.
Okay. Mr. Weber, who do you expect to present that testimony?
The operations would be either Kevin Flanagan or Karen Flanagan.
One of the things I was looking at in the plans today, and it just occurred to us, was this mezzanine level above the garage. And one of the things in the ordinance we look at is the number of stories. You identify the site as sloping and the mezzanine is exposed. To help, just make sure we conform with the story above-grade definition, which talks about how to measure a height of the exposed basement area above grade, to make sure it's not considered another story of the building. If you can provide an illustration or a exhibit in a future meeting, that would identify how these measurements are being taken, much like a building height measurement, so we can confirm that that's not another story for purposes of the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Snikus. Such an exhibit will be prepared and presented to the board by the civil engineer.
Thank you very much. Regarding the EV charging stations, you indicated it would be in the garage area. One of the things we're asking the board, or the applicant to consider is possibly have some of those in the public, maybe visitor areas that are readily accessible, so that it's a feature that could be used without having used a valet parking. But I'd offer that to the applicant.
Thank you.
You indicated the storage and recycling would be on each level. I anticipate there may be some future testimony regarding who is actually handling that waste disposal, if it's going to be a management service that will be taken care of by the owner of the building. That's something that I just can address. Going back to the rooftop area, you had indicated it had a certain type of roofing on the overall roof itself. Is that something like a cool roof?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because if you don't understand, let's talk about that. Thank you. In the dog run area, one of the things that I've heard in testimony, at least for daycare centers for dogs and things of that nature, some dogs can scale a four-foot-high fence. One thing to consider is whether or not that is a concern, and looking at whether a four-foot-high fence is high enough. I would hate to see a very high fence there, obviously, I'm not trying to encourage that, but it's one thing to think about with larger dogs, whether or not you may want to increase the height of that fence. We talked about the Juliet balconies. Thank you. The rooftop plantings that are being proposed in the planters, what's shown, is that just illustrative, or is that the actual final plan? It helps to understand how some of those areas may be screened from neighboring properties, things of that nature. I imagine you'll have live plants in those planters?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll act more like a green roof in those areas themselves? Will there be a sound system on the roof? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. It's something to consider, whether or not that is something that would help with the adjacent property owners. That's all the questions I had at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I have nothing further of the witness, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Delaney, would you have any questions at this time, or just care to hear the board's question?
With respect to that, I think the board, in terms of protocol, I'll prefer to be of secretism to the board, unless you want me to go first.
Okay. Grab a seat. If you have questions, please.
It's got a quick question, because on the A1, the unit breaks down to four. Looks like you're missing a three-bedroom.
Yes, there was a mathematical error on the chart, so the number of two bedrooms is actually 15, and the number of three bedrooms is actually two.
Where's the other three better on the first floor?
You mean on which floor it's on? Yeah.
One is at, we label it, is 106 unit, 106 is on the first floor, and then directly above it, unit two, I'm sorry. 106 is the ground floor.
It's 110, I think. Unit 110 is on the first floor.
On the second floor, it will be... I'm sorry, yes, 110, sorry. Benson, you're right. 110 and 106, which is, is it? Yes. This is ground floor, yes. It's, I'm sorry, it's this unit and that unit, correct. Because, I'm sorry, usually a three-bedroom unit, we place them at the corner where they have the maximum window line.
Questions from the board for the architect?
Okay, yes, this is working. On the side of the building, particularly Morris Avenue, I appreciate that you're breaking it visually. How about in terms of depth?
Great.
Could you go into like...
Sure.
How is or is not flat, and how much variation there is?
Sure. If we could just pull up, or we can use the, can you actually pull up one of the plans? One of the larger floor plans? So starting down on the corner of River Road and Morris Avenue, there's quite a significant step back at that corner. So we have about, and do you, can you give us the distance of that? And then within that corner portion, the brick bumps out. And then within that corner portion, the brick bumps out. So the bump out of the...
This is sixteen feet, yeah?
Okay.
This is sixteen feet step back at the corner.
And then what's the next one? So...
This one?
Yeah.
This one?
It's like five feet.
Five feet.
Right. So starting from River Road, it's sixteen feet and then there's a five-foot step back. And then within each one of the brick sections, the windows actually bump out from there and the brick portions are also stepped forward from the limestone portions. And that offset paying?
Let me put a bigger joint to...
I think they're about six inches, those portions. And then the windows sit in front of that.
Correct. Yes, that's six inches.
Any other questions?
Less of a question, more of a request. Can you adjust your renderings to show more context? Zoom out a little bit so we can see more of the surrounding area. I think the chairman brought up a good point about the relative mass of the project compared to the neighborhood. And I think any additional exhibits you can provide to shed some light on that would be certainly helpful to the board. I would also encourage you to create two additional views from planning, looking past the existing homes and showing how much of your building will be visible from that street.
Questions from the board? Hang on, I'm borrowing my...
First, simple question. Was a conforming plan with respect to height FAR building coverage contemplated for this, for a combined lot, understanding that the combination of lots is one of the items under request here?
I think the team looked at a lot of different scenarios. I know that our focus was on creating something where we could pull the building away from sort of the rear property line, pull it forward so that it addressed the street line on Morris Avenue. And then looking at the volume that would make the property work, given the amount of amenity space and other sort of elements that we wanted to put in the building.
And then with respect to architectural style, one of the goals of Summit's master plan is to maintain and enhance the character of Summit. How would you consider the design as represented here to speak to that particular goal of the master plan? And the planner may have testified that as well, but it would be interesting your perspective.
Sure. I think as we sort of started the presentation, it was really important to the Flanagans to, number one, use materials that are really classic and timeless materials. And so I think that the quality of the materials is number one in terms of sort of importance for the character of the building. When we think, when I think about architecturally, some of the classic apartment buildings in Summit, Summit has some of the most beautiful classic apartment buildings. So I think the intention was to evoke some of that character. And that certainly, you know, the master plan, excuse me, and the design guidelines speak to that. And so those were the things that we were referencing.
And with respect to signage, would that be explored in greater depth with the engineer or there's some specific comments regarding the inclusion, for example, of a, it was a street number was one of the comments in Krista's memo?
Sorry, we skipped over this when we took our break. I apologize. So on the stone wall, there is a sign there. The way that the ordinance reads is that you are, you're allowed to have one square foot of signage for every linear foot of street facade. And that was spoken to in Krista's memo. So the Morris Avenue facade is 138 feet long, so we can have 138 square foot signage, of course, we would never have. But the intention right now is that this sign may grow to include the numbers, but would all be conforming.
Would that potentially be discussed with the traffic testimony regarding appropriate signage for this facility and its location?
We certainly can, Mr. Chairman.
And next question is where we should direct our landscaping questions. I believe it's best to the engineer, you've touched on some of it today, but just to confirm, the engineer will be providing more extensive landscaping.
Yes, for sure.
Next, was ground floor retail contemplated as part of any design or was the commitment maintained from the beginning to look at this solely as a residential property?
I mean, I think the ground floor retail was discussed because that is a requirement in the zone, but as we testified earlier this evening, the thought was that for, that there is retail, right? There's nice new retail in the promenade building. And so it was better to not include retail for this property and instead to use it for the amenity, you know, aspect of the building. And also, the other consideration was that because of this sixteen-foot slope from River Road coming up the site on Morris Avenue, if we were to put retail on the first floor sort of facing River Road, it's sixteen feet up in the air. So those were the reasons.
Only a couple more.
Sure.
Did you participate in the neighborhood meeting and have an opportunity to hear comments from residents of Plain Street or others from the surrounding community?
I did and we did.
Okay. Can you share any, anything that you may have heard that reflected, was then reflected in changes to the architecture or some element of the plan?
You know, I, most of the conversation was really about, as was mentioned, there was a comment about the sort of traffic. And so I think that's the one that we heard sort of most strongly from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll have extended testimony on the use of the roof deck. That was an item for me that I wanted to explore, or else we'll spare you that. With regarding, with regards to the elevator and stair columns, are they typically tall? Can you give me some sense of, you know, why the variance is necessary and how we weren't able to accommodate the necessary mechanical operations within a building of the scale without that additional height?
Great question. So in order to make the roof accessible, and I know that was a question in one of the reports, and as I've testified, the building is fully accessible. To make a roof space fully accessible, you have to have an elevator. So we have two exit stairs and we have an elevator. In order for the elevator to operate, it has to have an overrun, so eight feet sort of from the floor to the top of the elevator. And then you need five feet for the overrun, which is just the way the mechanics of the elevator work. So by the time you get to the top of the roof structure, you've got eight plus five plus structure, you're at fifteen feet, you know, unfortunately.
Pretty good answer. With respect to the bike storage?
Yes.
Where'd that idea come from? And I'm just kind of, I'm reflecting upon the location of this particular property. River Road, in my opinion, is not tremendously bike-friendly. I think council member and I do that back there, he's a cyclist. I don't know if he's a brave River Road with any frequency, but just a sense of, you know, do you anticipate this being amenity that is in fact demanded by this type of property in that kind of location?
So I would say just in terms of people wanting, even if you're not going to cycle out your front door and go out onto River Road, although, you know, I think we all know, I live in Maplewood and everybody likes to sort of go out to the swamp, right? You know, many of my friends cycle out to the swamp. So I think having bike storage for us and for the team in any multifamily project these days is really important. And whether it's used coming out your front door or for longer trips, it seems important.
And my last question is regarding the solar panel readiness on the roof. Is that drawn from some new state requirement or regulation or an effort by the applicants to show sensitivity to greening of this building?
Um...
I understand there's EV charging requirements, for example, with parking. Is there, is, I don't know, are we required to provide solar readiness for these type of buildings?
So you're not required, it's not a state requirement, you know, the, it's not a state requirement. I think the ownership is interested in providing that as a sort of future, I don't want to call it an amenity, but a future sort of system for the building.
That may be an operational question to discuss the timeframe with which conversion of this solar readiness, ready space into an actual solar roof, if that's envisioned at this time. That's all the questions I have. Anybody have any further questions? All right, Mr. Delaney, you're up.
Do you have a microphone? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And some of this may be operational, so we'll defer it. Picking up on the chair's question about how we got to this project, it's fifty-two units, is that correct?
Yes.
And you, as the architect, you're part of the team, is that correct?
Yes.
And you, now, were you told to design a building with fifty-two units or did you recommend fifty-two units? How did that come about? Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
As in all projects, I would say it's a team process in terms of figuring out what makes sense for the property, what makes sense for the ownership team in terms of their program. So it's a team effort.
Is there some magic to the fifty-two units?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's what's curious. On the dog run at the top there, and this may be operational, how many dogs will be allowed in a dog run at one time?
I'll have to defer on that.
Okay, well, we can wait till the next, when they testify. I'm concerned a little bit because, you know, fifty-two units, I don't know whether there'll be a limit on the number of dogs. Will there be a limit on the number of dogs?
We'll have to defer to that.
Okay, and I would ask that the applicant consider that because I'd hate to see fifty-two units with everybody having three dogs, that's 150 dogs. And I'd hate to see, that is a lot of dogs. And I, I think at the end of the, and my client just, you know, they have a lot of dogs in their building and I'd hate to see 150 dogs on the dog run. And I think you would want to deal with that accordingly. So I'd like to hear some operation testimony on that.
Yes, there's an objection, there's been no statement that there's three dogs per unit.
I don't, you're absolutely hundred percent right. I guess that's why we're asking, we don't want three dogs per unit. So if we could have at least some testimony on that because, and at least the number of dogs in the dog run. Now, we don't really care about inside, but we just like to, we're concerned about noise. Picking up on the comments of the two board members, and thank you very much, board members. Will, the valet service will be testified by the, by the Flanagins or someone?
Yes.
Okay, fine, because obviously I really couldn't follow what's going to happen. I just wanted, for safety reasons, to make sure we have testimony on that. That's good, thank you. Most of this is operational. What are the hours of the operation of the dog run? And again, if you can, you'll testify in that, I assume, at the next meeting.
That'll be the same for the roof.
Okay, very good, that's great, good. Okay, any further questions?
Okay.
I'll be quiet.
All right. Any questions from members of the interested public for the architect? Mr. Naiden, first hand up.
Just for the record, I'm a former council member, so, because I know there's legal restrictions on council members actually speaking.
The prestige will never lead you, Mr. Naiden.
Thank you, appreciate it. I, this is more, I don't know if this is for you, but Mr. Weber said that he wanted questions collected for the next meeting, so I'll do it in that style. And this is in relation mainly to the roof, really, on two points, and they deal with environmental issues, which I have a particular interest for. The first one is in response to Mr. Snickers' question about planters. You said that essentially it would be like a green roof. Is there a number associated with the number of planters that would be put up there? If you have an answer?
We can provide, I don't have a number right now. They're shown in plan, but we'll provide a number.
That'd be great, thank you. The second question is regarding the solar, which I actually commend you guys for doing and would encourage it. And, but I look at the comment from the Environmental Commission on it, and as I read that comment, essentially it says that if you don't do it now, it won't happen at all. So I guess my question to you is, first of all, twofold. One is the area that you selected for the solar, did you do any kind of analysis or consult anyone to find out if that is the optimal location on the roof to do solar?
So, we did have discussions about solar. As you may know, the Flanagins have solar in other locations and so they actually have, you know, I would say, some experience with it. So there was discussion about location and area on the roof.
Thank you.
And then the second part of that question, and maybe this is the operational portion of it, is the Environmental Commission, as I said, specifically points out that the wiring associated with putting solar and putting the meter in, that if you do it when the building is being constructed rather than post-hoc, makes it more, much more likely that it'll be done rather than not. So I would ask, I guess, maybe from the operational perspective, if, why, if we're doing it, let's do it. And so can we get a commitment to actually do it? Thank you.
Maybe just to inject there as well to define solar readiness, at least, and then perhaps secure a commitment to proceed. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Karthik, I live on 11 Plain Street. And as the, Mr. Weber mentioned earlier, on March third, the Flanagin team did a neighborhood meeting where we had a chance to kind of look at the plans for, initially, we had kind of initial questions that they were trying to answer, so thank you for doing that. I did have a lot of questions, I think some of them were covered already, so I'm not going to repeat that. First it was about the fifty-two units, I know the total had added to sixty. However, in the breakdown of the apartments that you had mentioned, you said on the first floor there is twelve and on the second and third floor there is nineteen each, so that still adds up to sixty. So you might want to tell us like what the actual breakdown is. And I don't know if you have that ready or if you want to clarify it later.
Right, we'll ask them on that.
Okay. And kind of to follow up on the number of units, as Mr. Snickers said, the, it's fifty-two units, but it's still eight affordable housing units, is that correct?
Yes.
And even with the split that we talked about, twelve and whatever the numbers are, are we still seeing like seven affordable housing units on the first floor and one in the second floor?
Yes.
Thanks for that. And the, I'll kind of start maybe from the ground floor and just kind of go up, if that's easier. In your plan, do you, is there like places where there's going to be like, for example, dumpsters for trash or for recycling to be placed?
Yes. Yes, there is, so...
Is that on the outside of the building or inside of the building?
So it's all inside, so on the first floor, I know, so on the first floor, it's located inside behind the primary staircase and there's a tenant trash and recycling room and then there's the building trash and recycling. So there's a chute where stuff comes down and there's a compactor here. So, and then the trash, there's a secondary exit or entrance so that that trash gets taken out on trash days, sort of at this back door.
So for a trash truck or the recycling truck that comes in, they're going to come in through the, through the entrance around the roundabout that you have there? Or how would they access the...
So the engineer will provide testimony on all the vehicles, but the short answer is they're not coming around the roundabout, they're coming into this area and they will provide testimony.
Thanks, I'll hold on to my questions then.
Sorry, and then just to finish that, do you want to lift up that trash all the way up or you're going to ask by floor?
If you can comment on what...
So on the upper floors, there is a trash and recycling room on each floor with a chute. So it lines up on the second and third floors and goes down into that building trash room on the first floor.
I would also kind of like, just kind of talk about the scale, I know there was a question about massing and one of the board members talked about giving kind of like a perspective of how this building will look from Plain Street. I would second that, if it is possible to see that, that would be really great. And even maybe from Mill Place, which is one street over, to see like how the whole building looks in reference to two streets which are in the immediate vicinity of this particular building. of, uh, this particular building. I don't, yes?
If we need access to see the back of the property, are you willing to let us access your property?
Yes, absolutely. I'm on Eleventh Plain, so please welcome to come on. Let me see, I'm just trying to knock off the questions that I've already asked. Uh, the solar panels, um, could you kind of tell me like where exactly along the roof there's a plan to place these?
So, um, this is the area with the fence that's designated for the solar panels. This is the southern side of the site, um, and this is the promenade location here.
Okay, closest to the promenade, so facing towards, if I would say, Washington Elementary, which goes in the south. The, my other question is obviously going to again be around, um, the roof. Uh, when you were designing this, was this always going to be kind of a requirement that was that the building was supposed to have like a accessible roof for residents? Or at any point did you even consider kind of like having the normal roof that a building of this size would have?
It's a great question. I would say, um, I think, uh, sort of in this day and age, um, and in, in all of the projects, multifamily projects we look at, um, there's consideration for roof areas. I think people, um, you know, everybody would like to have some outdoor space. Uh, so, it was a discussion, but, um, I think early on it was, you know, um, the discussion was that having an accessible roof just makes sense.
I, I, I think that I did have a lot of questions around the operational nature, which I will hold off, uh, on asking. The other question that I had obviously was, um, around the, are there plans to put in like video cameras around the perimeter of this building, on the building, um, as you figure so?
Um, I, I think that's an operational question, um, so-
Yes, 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 it will be some cameras.
I, I'd be curious to kind of see like where those locations are and what direction they're facing in, um, so maybe in the future discussion would be good, good to see those. I think that's it. I think the, the, like I said, I do have a lot of questions around the operational nature, so I'll hold on to that. And there's obviously traffic related questions, which is up here. A very hot topic, so I'll hold on. Thank you.
Coming back, some more. Hi, thank you, your presentation was great. I don't compliment any people, but I do want to say thank you for going green on this as much as you can. I wish some other buildings in town would be going as green as you, so thank you on that. Um, so some questions I have, um, uh, the garbage pickup has always been a hot issue. Um, so do you guys have somebody that takes care of your other properties that would be maintaining this facility or would it be somebody new? A private hauler. So, is there an ordinance in place or is there a time and place that wouldn't wake up the residents around? So, it's not at 5:00 AM or 4:30?
Certainly, yeah, we can, uh, address that by way of condition that's appropriate.
Uh, the other question, um, the rooftop, I love a rooftop party. Um, I was a party girl here in Summit, so, uh, looking forward to all those children that might be in this, uh, this apartment. How tall is the fence around? Four feet, is that correct?
Uh, it's forty-two inches, three foot six, which is code, the code we want.
Okay, so I, I have a concern, not just for the dogs, but for all of those teenagers that are going to be partying on this rooftop. Um, you know, their mental health is a big thing right now in town, um, and not just for parties, but-
Miss, sorry, Mrs. Gag, I want to just leave any questions at the moment.
Oh, sorry. So, um, is it possible to change the size of that fence, taking into consideration, um, how tall the building is and that people could potentially jump off?
So, um, uh, do I have to object to that?
You may, if you'd like to be on the record.
Yes, there's an objection to that question.
Okay.
Can we please state the questions that are appropriate and responsive to the testimony that the architect has provided and stop talking about things of parties or things that are not in evidence or offering any advice with regard to the possibility-
I'll move on, I'll move on.
-beyond that.
Okay. Uh, the other question is, uh, how much space is between, I think it's the promenade building, is that what we call your building? And, um, the entrance to their building? Is there a way to see that, the, uh, their driveway and the existing driveway?
The, 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 we have testified to that.
Okay.
It's on the same.
Okay. And the other question I have, is there a way to get a topographical view of this building with the other buildings around it? I'm having trouble visualizing. We just see the corner, we see the front and we see the side, but looking at it as a whole where the light is, where the Volvo dealership is, um, just kind of seeing where, um, you park your cars there right now, where that, I guess that's the used lot that you guys have. I'm just having trouble kind of seeing like, uh, overview of how this looks in that area. Do you guys have a shot of that by any chance?
I believe that was also a question that was posed by one of the board members. We will respond to that question, providing the neighborhood.
Okay, I, I, can I just ask him a question? I, I don't just want to see it from, um, his street, I want to kind of see it from all, uh, the other angles as well. Topographical aerial view would be great. Thank you.
Any other members of the interested public care to ask a question? Okay. Well done. Anything further, Mr. Weber, for this evening?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would ask that this application be carried to May sixteenth at 7:30 PM at the new venue of Council Chambers at Summit City Hall, Pod 12 Springfield Avenue, Summit, New Jersey. I understand that in that adjournment, that the request is for renotice because of the change in the venue. And as a result, we will serve, uh, new notice and publish new notice identifying that there is a change in the venue. We will not be recurring here, we'll be going to City Hall on May sixteenth. So, I would ask that it be carried, and we hereby extend the time within which the board may act on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Just need a motion and a second. Oh, Mr. Delaney, of course. I'm sure Mr. Weber would like this. Oh, is that the only thing on the agenda that night or are there other things on the agenda?
We plan for this to be the only, uh, application on the agenda.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion to carry to-
Carry.
Thank you very much. And a second from Ms. Sager. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned to twenty-first, twenty-first of March, back in Council Chambers for our regular business. Thank you.